Okay, the agenda. Any changes, additions?
Chair, just some things that were at your table there. An email from AMC on delegates. And we do have a document to amend the purchase agreement for the highway sale. We put a summary list together of ARPA projects that have been considered and approved by the board. And in the finance committee minutes.
Okay, all right.
Where do you want the highway sale, under commissioners?
Yeah, I was just gonna just put it under, thank you Commissioner Brind'jar, I was just gonna put it under county administrator report. But it can be under where, whatever the, you were, Chair.
It's under reports is fine.
Okay, it's already there.
I thought it was there.
I'll move the agenda with the changes.
Yep, 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 I thought it was there. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I made that motion.
Okay, my Ben? Thank you my John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So same sign, hearing done, motion carried.
Highway under reports for county administrator.
Minutes, October 4th. Ben?
Uh, yeah. Under my reports, under number two. That's the Lake Agassy. So lake is singular and then Agassy, I don't really know how to spell, but somebody on this board might.
Not me.
Regional Library. Then under appointments, the second bullet point, there's something about appointing Lori Olson to the district position number three.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what, are they numbered?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Then on the next page. Well, I was gonna ask, on the benefits committee, wasn't I appointed to it and then all the commissioners as alternates?
Didn't say that.
John, if we decided to do two commissioners or one, or what?
Um, I think we just listed the Commissioner Grimsley as the sole commissioner and then we would add another person if needed. That's what my.
That's what I think too.
Okay.
And then we must have appointed the rest of the people listed here.
Yes.
With it on a document or?
You also approved, um, the two departments as the supervisor in that motion. That was Nicole Ecker, Lisa Will, and Denise Warren. The bargaining unit ones, for the bottom lines, you do not approve. They appoint and we receive them.
Okay.
And we're still waiting for a few of the bargaining unit employees to respond.
Okay, I just, it must not have been singular, it must have been just all in one motion. Okay, then on page two, under public hearing, isn't it two inlets count, country store? Yeah, okay, so then just change county to country, it's in there twice, one on the top of that public hearing and one on the bottom. And then under motion, this is under the finance minutes, motion to approve payment of regular auditor warrants claims. We usually listed as regular claims auditor warrants in over ninety days.
Yeah, we changed it last time and I thought she still has got it, but it's close.
Okay, then on page three or four, this is under auditor treasurer number three. The motion and second to approve the extension addendum with the U of M. I would just add, with the change that Becker County will employ the part-time staff instead of Minnesota or the U of. So if we refer back to it, we know what we did there. Then I just had under page four of four, under land use, you've got number one, EDA, number two, I would change to environmental services. And under the closed session. That Minnesota statute that referenced there is thirteen D point zero five. Subdivision to three A instead of point five.
Good catch on that one.
That's all I have.
Terry? John? Page one, very bottom, report township in Becker County meeting on Thursday, it's a township association meeting. Uh, page three. Very bottom of page, highway presented, motion second to approve resolution one A. It's not Belson, it's Nelson. Surprised that gets that.
No.
Oh, um, page three, um, up at the top, on the digital scanning project, it says that.
I, I've got that on here, miss.
Kyle was, Kyle was not present. On, on page four, you guys will have to try to remind me, because in my notes, when we removed the resolution under the land use at one H, solid waste fee, we removed from agenda. I had that, we had a motion on that, did we not have a motion on that when we removed that? I had Barry and Richard as, as voting members on that line on my notes, but I don't remember. Did we have a motion?
Well, they may have made a motion, but then Steve said that he would retool it.
Okay, I probably.
The reason he did is because he wasn't sure that the solid waste assessment fee would pass. And when that did pass, he wanted to re.
Okay, I just couldn't remember if we'd done that, I'd written down a motion maker in a second, but we didn't.
Then I think it was motion withdrawn.
That's all I had.
Second.
Motion my John? Second my Ben, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign, hearing done, motion carried. Open forum. Nothing? Okay. Reports and correspondence, John, you're first. Yeah, we can do you if you want.
It, uh, it had a copy of the extension.
No, it's on there somewhere.
We outlined extension policy of the bragging out of this as the officer was not ordered out from bank. So the phase two assessment was completed. And then it's a two to three month process to get a commercial appraisal at that point. The appraisal was due in and was received back in last Friday. Uh, my understanding, I don't have the number on it, but the appraisal was satisfactory for the banks. So now they're just wrapping up the final item so that we can hopefully close within a week or two here. So the, I did the extension out to the end.
Okay. Motion?
Some more.
Motion my John?
Second.
Second my Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed, same time, hearing done, motion carried. Josh, thank you.
See if I got here and everything changing, I probably lost my notes. Didn't have a lot, because. We had Northwest Emergency Communication Board and our PSAP, we're looking in cybersecurity, we'll be starting a training here coming up. Where they actually come in and sit down with the dispatchers. But our dispatcher had to fill out. Uh, needs assessment workbook to get the training and updates. And if updated, there's grants that will be available if we need to upgrade something. And I talked with Shane. During the meeting or messaged him and he said that her head dispatcher didn't think he needed. I said, well, let's go through with it. So if it opens up, just formality goes around to fill out some workbook assessment. Add it into the people that do the assessment and then they'll come in and do the training. They deem that there's some equipment or software that's needed, there's grants available. Round by now later.
Yeah.
Comes out of LUPES. I'll follow up with Shane on that. Contractor Headwaters out of emergency for overseeing their westernal region. Their increase about five thousand per, per year. They haven't had an increase since back in two thousand fifteen, so, and our member dues up there remain the same, so. Basically unchanged and come out of the little reserves we got, so. Other than that, I think that's about all they have left.
Okay, Barry?
I would meeting for the construction meeting went very well. We have a change order coming in. Um, the, the outsourced storage that it needs fire suppression, so on the lean to. So we have to add that in, it's mostly nine thousand.
It's all metal and concrete.
Yeah, so, but otherwise it's going well.
How do you, how do you keep, is it, is it a pipe, pipeline?
It's dry hydrant.
Or dry hydrant, so no freezing issue?
No. What's that mean? There's water is somewhere.
It blows it out.
Oh.
Some sort of pressurized system, so once it, it will blow it out if it got, you know.
It's the same thing in Trinity Church and remodel up in the attic where it's not heated, a sprinkler system. But there's a air, something that blows, keeps it blowing out.
That's the only, and just report on the Legion in Lake Park, which is burnt down, got their first bids to reconstruct it. They were very, very high, so they're gonna go back into the drawing board, I think, and see. Hopefully we'll, they'll figure something out and get something rebuilt.
Okay, I'm next, um, I had a, well, I had, I attended the fall timber sale. It went well, all tracks, all ten tracks sold, total was a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-four dollars and eighty-four cents. The sale went from the appraised value up to a hundred and twenty-four percent over. Went pretty well, but Aspen, of course, does the best. And I have a construction meeting at, at the MRF, backfill is completed, building structure install is complete. Metal wall panels install has begun, bottom concrete pits and east exterior slab walls should be poured, they were scheduled to be poured last Thursday. Cold storage building slab will be poured on Friday, east and west loading dock under slab work has begun, underground plumbing work has begun. The contractor is gonna be, after this week, will be discussing anything that's left to pour will be cold weather charges. Which we know we have to have two percent in hot water probably, so that'll be that. The new well to be drilled in November and it's about it for that. That's all I had too, it was a slow, slow time. Richard?
Nine eleven.
Benjamin?
On the fifth, transit met, we were up nineteen percent in September for riders over two thousand twenty-one. Our financials look good and we have, we will not spend all of our grant this year. We will likely receive a ten percent increase in our grant for next year. And needed to make cuts after the state reviewed our sixteen percent increase request. We made cuts to line items not included in the five months rent, uh, that we'll be paying for the new highway building. Uh, we'll have to complete a comprehensive review. Coming up here, which is a federal requirement. This will take into account factors like rides, mileage, financial info, and basically all aspects of transit. The last time that was completed was in two thousand fourteen. And it's supposed to happen every three, three years or so, so they could look at records back to two thousand fourteen, but Kevin thinks they'll just go back three years. We received our appraisal back and it came in at fifty-six thousand instead of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. And, uh, so I asked Pat and Kevin to work on buying out the building now. And I believe that's all our intentions at that price, is that okay for them to move forward with that? Yeah, so again, that's sixty-five grand instead of one seventy-nine, so. We got approval to purchase our two thousand twenty-one bus, the cost went from ninety-five thousand to a hundred and thirty thousand. We'll pay that ten percent match, but we've got all the fare revenue that we've been able to actually keep, so we've got money in our account. And we received one applicant without a CDL or experience, but we're hoping he takes the position. And there is no fall leaves tour because the system is busy right now, it's very busy compared to the amount of rides that we're giving. So we need to find more drivers and we've always kept that part-time, but, uh, you know, we definitely need to get some, so. Hopefully somebody will show up or maybe we'll be coming and asking for. For more position. On the sixth, the museum building committee met, there wasn't a lot of movement from the prior week. We discussed the fact that Hogg has not showed up to do any of the site work for weeks. We keep thinking he'll come, they'll, they'll come and they haven't. I think they're busy on the project, I read in the paper about some difficulties there on phase two of us, they drive. Uh, we're having trouble getting in touch with the correct people at Arbig as well. We need to do all the electrical and communication work for sprinklers and things. We talked, talked about a rain down spout that might be in a bad spot and we needed to get a. Pipe that'll go in, into the storm sewer, put into the ground, uh, so that the new larger permanent some pumps. That have permanent power can be tested, we really can't turn them on right now and. That, that pipe was supposed to be put in the ground a while ago. We're trying to get certified to move into the basement and, uh. Arbig in that, in that pump, um, getting that pipe in will have a lot to do with it, the elevator is on schedule and the fire suppression is. Dry installed in the basement right now, dry fitted. And then I missed the, the last one, uh, did you happen to go?
No, I haven't been getting the invites lately.
They don't send them.
Oh.
It's just on Thursday.
One, one thirty.
Wednesday at one thirty.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah. On the twelfth, human services met and talked about in ARPA priority list. Some of the things on it were updating the outside of the building, new water fountains and fixing the main bathrooms, accordion door replacement, windows and public health that can open and. Serve as a, you know, emergency exit. New fleet vehicles, cubicle replacements, chairs, docking stations, briefcases, vendor contract for scanning needs. And a shed where they can put, uh, things like car seats and, um, shovels and stuff that's always just kinda set in the entryway of the back door. We also discussed increasing the days available to work from home up from three days per week. And applying the current flex policy to the telecommuting policy. Um, a lot of those things that I just listed on here were things that the committee felt like we could move forward, you know, some of them are small. I don't, Richard, did you have anything to add?
No.
It's.
No, there's a lot of different stuff there, so.
Yeah, but most of it seemed very appropriate, things that we need to get done, so. I think if it's okay with the board, we'll just give them direction to get quotes and then bring it back, bring it here, just like any other normal purchase order. And, uh, just with the knowledge that it'll be coming out of ARPA, is that okay with everybody? Yeah. Um, yesterday, Land of Dancing Sky met, there was a proposed interstate funding formula change from the state of Minnesota. Kerry Benson, the executive director from the Minnesota Board on Aging, presented the change and said it has not been updated since two thousand four. We currently get around three million dollars from, from this formula. It's federal and state money. And it runs a lot of our programs at Dancing Sky, the new formula would change our three million to about one point nine million per year. And as a percentage in their formula, it was eleven point three five, what we get now, cut down to nine point five six. The feds didn't change their policy at all, and so many of the members were very unhappy because the funding was taken from rural counties. And transferred to metro counties. Uh, we didn't have any cut in funding, it was just kind of a reorder and. All, all rural counties lost and all the metro counties seem to gain. Darla Waldener, who was our director and now works for the Board on Aging, she was our previous director for many years, said we should go to AMC and. Uh, lobby. About this, so there's a lot of upset people there and, uh. I don't think our program's quite as robust here, so maybe we wouldn't. Be affected as much, um, but certainly there will be more that we hear about that, I think. That's all I had.
Okay. County Administrator Evaluation Summary, uh, the county board met, or the county board went into closed session per Minnesota statute. One three D point zero five, subsection three A, thank you Ben. Uh, to evaluate the performance of the county administrator by majority consensus of the board, the county administrator was given a satisfactory performance rating. That's my summary. County Administrator?
You jump appointments, but.
Oh, do you want anybody in appointment?
No, I'm working, I've talked to a couple on punting zoning, I can see, I'm waiting to hear back.
When we talked about that individual. Um, I can't remember the name now, but we had a conversation about, it doesn't matter, because I don't remember the name. I think he passed away or something, we talked about it, I'm kidding. Okay, County Administrator?
So if, if the chair would permit, um, we have actually Brian Rubenstein for probation on, he's got, he's on a schedule where he has another meeting. Uh, I'd like to, uh, have him discuss his budget a little bit, um, if the chair is okay with that, the board? I'm gonna hand out and just pass this on to everyone, and so you can just pass that on to each individual. Uh, Brian, can you hear us?
Yes, sir. Thank you, thank you guys for having me.
Yep, and we met with Brian not, uh, well, too long ago, a few, I guess a few weeks ago, but we've also talked on the phone. And, um, I think the board knows this, that, you know, we've transitioned probation some time ago from, from county to state. Um, although it's, it's interesting that we do still have two part-time and one full-time employee that are still county employees that are in the office, is that right, Brian?
Yes, sir, yes, thanks, Pat. Uh, we still have our diversion and title four E worker, Steve Villahower. He's our permanent employee, uh, full-time, we've had him for, uh, quite a few years, but, uh, he had filled Nicole Ledoux's position. Uh, back, uh, seven, eight years ago, so. Uh, we're actually looking for, uh, doing a little bit of a change to that and I'll bring that to the county board's attention, uh, probably. Next month or so, uh, Steve is actually transitioning over into our felony office, because he took a different position and was hired on with us at the DOC. So I'm excited to bring, uh, a possible change to that position in the future here.
And it just, um, I'm, I'm gonna give Brian the floor chair if you're okay, but I just wanna just emphasize just the, the items that have kind of deviated from the previous year for the, for the board's, uh. Review, um, revenue streams from twenty-two to twenty-three have gone up for the agent reimbursement and also for, um. The charges for services, supervision fees. Uh, the professional and technical services, um, cost expenditure has increased, uh, as has the. Uh, rental and service agreements, um, also increased slightly. Um, so I thought I would focus on those, but certainly answer, you know, the board, this is their opportunity to ask any questions you have of Brian. But, but if I could just ask, just, just my only question is, Brian, could you talk a little bit about the professional and technical services of? Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, it was a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, in two thousand twenty-three, it's two hundred and thirty, and also how reimbursement works for us as well?
Thank you, Pat. Um, so as the board knows, um, we have a formula that's put into play for reimbursement to the county. For our full-time corrections agents. Uh, during the course of these last couple of years, there's been some different hires, uh, of other agents, um, into the office. Uh, we have three different tiers within the agent classification, one being corrections agent, one being corrections agent senior, and another being corrections agent career. Uh, the, one of the reasons for the increase is when we hired two, or, yeah, diff, several different corrections agent careers. Uh, into the office, that increased the salary reimbursement just because of the scale that they were on. Uh, the other reason that I've got our two thousand twenty-three budget set as that is because at the time that we put this in. Um, I didn't have the, uh, two folks that were actually less salaried. So I've got a little bit of play for this year, but I wanted to be safe, uh, with the board, just to make sure that we were. We were sitting right around the same salary as what we've been at since two thousand twenty-one. Um, it may shift down just a little bit because we've got some, we've got the new hire who comes in much lower in the scale, so that will help. Uh, but other than that, as far as the rental and service agreements, it's actually lower. Um, I've only asked for an increase just to come up with the two thousand twenty actual budget, but we could probably reduce that a little bit. No, actually I did, uh, two thousand twenty-three budget, I brought that down to fifteen hundred, so. Other than that, those are the biggest differences, um, pretty, pretty par for, uh, par for the course over, for what we do within the county for our. Um, for our, for our model and corrections in Becker County.
Okay.
I don't remember seeing the, the hiring requests coming through with the higher staff.
Uh, those are our, uh, state, um, state agents, Ben.
Then we reimburse them a lump sum.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, that's standard, so let's just take for instance, I, we could hire an agent that comes in at twenty-three dollars an hour. Versus a career agent who comes in at, uh, forty-some dollars an hour. It should, it ebbs and flows over the years, depending on if some of the state agents were to transfer out, transfer in.
Okay, any other question?
Well, is, are we just? Deficit spending your budget this year then?
Um, if you can repeat that again, Mr. Grimsley, sorry about that.
How, how are you paying for the current costs, the, the actual months, one through five, you've. You, um, had exceeded your. Your two thousand twenty-one budget in that line item.
So basically, it, my understanding is, 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 on the county formula in regards to how we pay our supervision. It kind, it can ebb and flow in regards to if we have different hires throughout the year when the budget is already set. And so this isn't the first time it's happened, but I think. Um, as far as where the budget goes, whatever we spend, it's also reflected in the reimbursement. As we just kinda had, had an anomaly this last, uh, last period. But, uh, that's really all I can say to that, is the county chips in in regards to what the differences are. Uh, but you'll notice that, uh. You know, back in two thousand twenty, we had a major difference on there, but I don't think that's a hundred percent accurate.
So it, it just comes out of the public safety. Fund?
Correct.
Their fund balance. And then Nicole's here, so I'm gonna ask her, and then there's a corresponding deposit made for reimbursement from that.
Correct, yeah, as noted on the top.
And that reimbursement of sixty-nine thousand, that's about what you expect it'll be for the whole year?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So all, so if you think of this, all supervision services within Becker County Corrections. If you take that seventy thousand dollars away from the two thirty, Becker County is paying approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for all probation services.
For the, for the professional services, of course, then.
Correct.
Whole budget looks like it's more like three hundred and twenty-one thousand, what's?
Correct, for the supervision services.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
No.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you all, and thank you for giving me a little bit of time to, to brief this with you all, and thank you, Pat, for the meeting the other week.
You're welcome. I'll just continue with my reports here, um, you have a document that was handed out, commissioners, on the AMC request, um. On who the delegates are, of course, our five commissioners are automatically delegates, uh, but you could add three others. Um, we just got this email, they would like to have that information by Wednesday, November second. And, uh, three of you will be at the conference here in December. I might recommend that we do add three additional delegates, these can be voting delegates, they can vote on behalf of the county. Um, they certainly can also play a role in case commissioners are not able to make it to the AMC conference, they can fill in for one of those committees. There are five committees, of course, and there are five commissioners, so. Um, uh, certainly I just received this, but I, I might recommend, uh, just for the interest of time. Is that, um, I'd be added as the county administrator, but then also maybe two of our, a bigger county department heads, like Denise Warren at Human Services, uh. Uh, perhaps, uh, um, Jim with our county engineer. Uh, and again, uh, they have, as you know, there's five different committees. Um, three of you, you, you all are designated to sit on one, but we just fill in the gap if you were not able to. So we would have still representation in each of the committees, so, so I'd like to put my name on there, I've done that before. But I might suggest that Jim and Denise be added as well.
Take action on that.
If you don't mind, yeah.
Any, any thoughts by the board?
So I'm on gen, neurogovernment, John, you're on transportation. And then. And then Larry, you're on environmental.
Yeah, I'd like to see, like, Jim Olson attend because a lot of the engineers do, and they have their meeting. Target, transportation, and come up with some good ideas and.
And Commissioner Grimsley, thank you, Commissioner Grimsley, you said on general government, uh, as our call, uh, right? It's just, yeah, so Denise, uh, Human Services, uh, the committee there, committee would be a good fit for her.
Um, well, Larry, are you on public safety?
No.
And then Richard, you're on Human Services.
I don't know.
I believe you are.
And then we're all alternates for each other, I suppose. Although they're all at the same time.
They're all the same time, that's the, that's the struggle, you know?
Does anybody have any issues with Jim Olson, Denise and Pat being on the list here?
No.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Motion by John?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
And the three commissioners that are attending AMC, um, everything is booked for you. I think you've received emails from staff about your hotel accommodations and your registration, so everything is in place for that. Um, the next.
I, I did get that.
Oh, oh, you did not, Commissioner Nelson? Well, let's make sure that Peggy sends that out, we apologize for that, but Peggy's the one that was organizing that. Uh, the next page, though, on that same sheet that was handed out, uh, there will be, uh, an event here this Friday for the AMC District Four meeting, I know you've all received email communications on that. They do have a series of questions to answer. For the most part, they're, uh, questions that, you know, we have on, uh, uh, on the levy increases, the key drivers, I certainly can answer unit negotiations. But, you know, these last few questions, what's county position is currently hardest to fill, we can answer that from HR perspective. Um, the last two, what are the county's legislative pri- uh, priorities? Um, we've been deferring to the AMC and, um, MRC on that, but if the county has anything specific, we can certainly, um, put that in there to review on Friday. And then what are the biggest challenges you anticipate? Again, I think that's something I'd like to hear from the commissioners. Yeah, I guess you don't need to answer now, but I'll follow up in an email, we'll need it by Friday.
One, I won't be here.
Right? I'll write it down. That'll get a laugh. We want to be very.
Why are you laughing?
So I'll put an email out, but if, if, if we could get a response from commissioners, it'd be appreciated. Um, and then, um, the other item then, um, was also handed out, um, to the board, uh, was the, um, list of, uh, ARPA projects, I'll re- review that during the ARPA review. And, um, I think that was the items, um, that's been handed out. Bargaining and negotiations, we're starting to schedule negotiations for beginning of November. Uh, Commissioner Oakeson is our commissioner that sits on that. Um, I am interested in, um, um, getting some feedback when we get to the budget section on, um, what departments you would like to see for budgets for November first and fifteenth. Um, and then township meeting for this Thursday evening, um, is scheduled for six-thirty. Uh, there's an agenda that's been posted, I know it's been emailed to the board, but, um, certainly if people are interested in attending that, I, I've been asked just to give like a quick review like the previous year and. And so, so there's the items I have, did you have something, Larry?
I didn't, I don't think I got it. At least I didn't get it yesterday.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'll look.
Okay.
Oh, I, I don't think I got it.
The new learning curve.
Well, thank you, Barry, I'll, I'll just segue to, to budget now, page six, um, I have the updated timeline for the board. And the one thing I wanted to get more direction on is schedules. Like I said, I'm interested in knowing, um, what departments you would like to see specifically for November first and fifteenth. We will have the Otter Treasurers Office and the Attorney's Office scheduled because they are requesting, um, additional investments in staff. Um, but if you look at that schedule for page six, I wanted to remind the board that when you set the schedule, you set a schedule for the December thirteenth as a board meeting because December sixth is the AMC conference. And then there'll also be a board meeting in December twentieth. Um, the last board meeting in November would be November fifteenth, so we have a month where there'll be no board meetings. And so the recommendation is to either do one of two things, uh, either have a special board meeting on the twenty-ninth, that would be two weeks apart from the other board meetings, or give authorization for the finance committee to approve, uh, expenditures, uh, so we can pay the bills. So I'm interested in getting some direction for the board on that.
What's your thought?
We usually give the finance committee.
Direction.
This is November, though, not December.
Yeah, it's for, it's not the end of the year, it's, because there's a three-week period. Can I have a special meeting or can the finance decide, but? You guys?
Finance and then ratify it.
Yeah.
No reason, unless, unless there's something that.
Comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we don't need to have any action because we're going to be following schedule.
Very, very good, thank you, commissioners. Um, also in the, in the budget information, uh, page seven, uh, this was a list of the, uh, the preliminary levies from the counties that submitted the survey. And then on the page behind that, it's the common factors, and then how it's put in a bar chart. Um, I think we're fitting pretty much in the middle of what you're seeing with these counties that responded. And, um, we're at five, our preliminary lever, as you know, is five-point-five percent. That has been brought down slightly with the insurance being reduced, uh, with the peep insurance going, we had budgeted for six percent and it came down to five. So there's been a change a little bit in our budget and the, and the corresponding levy. Uh, the reasonings, um, that are there are pretty, pretty common, wages, inflation, you see a lot of that, health insurance cost. Um, at the conference that I was at, we were hearing a lot of counties very concerned about insurance, so we were, we feel very fortunate that our insurance costs, uh, with peep were where we were at. And as I mentioned at a previous board meeting, all our other insurances has either gone down or have stayed the same. So we're seem to be in a good spot there. Um, but I just wanted to cover that timeline and, and just appreciate, um, how you guys like, wanted to do with, um, with paying the bills. So, um, so if there are no questions on that, we'll just move to the, um, to our next budget, um, environmental. Um, Steve Skug is going to come up and review the environmental budget, and you, you brought copies, Steve? We had to do some updating late yesterday, so that's why you're getting them now.
Steve, is the township to notify that that meeting tomorrow from Southwest Travel and Lake Road? I should make sure they're, make sure that they, they are.
Unless we have the two thousand twenty-three to pull the budget. Commentary of some of the impact. Jason just doesn't cover everything.
Well, boy, start, Steve, Nicole's going to come up and sit right next to you there, so, thank you, Nicole. Go ahead.
Putting some smaller pieces to our. Picking fees basically for. A lot of demo classes. Those are going to be big, uh, so. Probably be digging part yourself. This patch would be reflected in this. Uh, you also in our committee, we talked about adding, uh, some, a new transportation tandem or possibly a merch manager. That would be something to be thinking of. We get a score and a band agree for both of those positions. If we added a transportation assignment position, we'd be adding more people, maybe some left, we'd create a new position. That's basically to go back to for our transportation managers. We actually look at this as. Total amount of labor that we've paid out. Other highlights than the solid Mr. South. Have we talked about at our last board meeting? Increase in that volume. Contract is up in two thousand twenty-three. And that additional crossover and above that, if, 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 folks, they're coming higher. Moving on, solid waste. Most of those issues, recycling. Going to see some changes there, the markets have been up. And last met, uh, again, work by West Rock. Always one day instead of getting trucks and transit to turn around or stop them. I'm going to plan to, for our, for our network, which takes volume commodities part of the cycle. We have been working with another company, they'll be, go to that month. Increase that as well as getting some plus. Other commodities, if there's really taking a hit to, uh, plastic. If you looked at volumes or, uh, revenue received from plastic now dramatically in the last few years. That also is dropping fast. In fact, number buyers repeating to you. It's a way spring, you know, who knows, that stuff can come out.
What happened to West Rock?
West Rock is a big company, and, uh, they have a number of different factories and, you know, they, they just went through a retro pit. And they just started to take cardboard and.
For good or tempered? Don't know.
They laid off everybody, including all the buyers. And plenty of people used to stuff.
Oh.
They processed, uh, mixed paper as well, they would continue to take that. They had always brought paper. Uh, the future on that, I was just looking, looking at the, uh, national price for paper, it's on lines in there already. So, you know, who knows where this goes. That stuff with goes down can come back up, we've seen that in quarters. It would be right prior to that, we were very low, and, uh, we had a space of about two months, and the whole, it stayed up there. So, that's all relative to the economy. And, uh, the national economy slows down, you'll see backlog, the ability to inventory. People that are recycling, actually recycling in paper. And if there's not a demand for that, it's just a people evaporates. So anyway, uh, this budget does reflect what I think prices do. Fortunately, we've had, you know, sort of a strong market for recyclables additional. We always managed to do probably better than they have on the books. A few years ago in plastics and recyclable, we were, I mean, we were getting real estate, we had a market here. And I expect that.
Is there any movement on the state side that if we're, if it's not marketable, we can burn it?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's a, that's right in the.
Oh, there was a time when you couldn't?
Yeah. I, I think this is a long stack, but there's so much investment in structure out there. Companies will.
Welcome to farm commodities.
Are they down, Barry, yet?
No, they're not down, but.
Up and down.
They're up and down, dropped, rock bottom. And then people ask you, oh, well, why can't you make money? They were, prices were good prices, well, I had to sell when they were low to pay the bills, I mean, like. You can't, you just can't go backwards and say when you're going to sell it two years ago, this is where I want to sell, high markets. Don't watch me.
And we briefly touched upon this at the last board meeting, too. Becker County does do collection recyclables. Guess when the expense say. Getting cheese in the question. We're playing that crushing concrete twenty-two, that's maybe if we thought in the twenty-three, so there's some target elsewhere. Entire disposal charges are going up. We were at about two-sixty, two-sixty-five, nine, or a few hundred. Thing that we do in the, is, those are managing out there. As an entire recycling facility manager, and then oversee the operations of the recycling facility as well as coordination and all the cycling drivers. That was in, and, and then they could also back up a transaction manager detox, and you've got some redundancy there.
It's, it's hard, hard for me to think about hiring more people when your revenue's down. I mean, it's a difficult time to be asking for more help.
Yeah. I get that. But if you do, there's something to be talked about.
A long time.
And as facility expands, do a lot more, and there's probably a need to do more. Because as the cost of garbage goes up. Trying to find alternative ways, you know, some, you know, hard cost. Also, we have in, in here, uh. Hazardous waste is pretty.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You got a question?
Yep.
What, what do you have the, um, the demo sell in here? It, it's a capital item on your balance sheet, and you've got it in your budget as an expense, and I don't see any offsetting revenue. So you've built it into like your fees forever then? Yeah. That's a big boost from twenty to one-sixty. Uh, that's not the way we usually do capital items.
The one-time expense, when you call it capital item or expense, it's really no value in it once it's built up.
Yeah, but what, what you did on your other one-time expenses is you either put in an offsetting revenue or did a transfer in. On this one, you just left it in your budget. Well, it would just be paid with your fund balance. So you would just put it in from reserves or not budget? Not, you wouldn't build it into your rates? Every, not every single year?
Well, you know, it depends, I mean, what you type in there. Because at the end of the day, you have a fund balance, maybe you short it a lot, and that's what's going to come. And then we could.
Right. So you would build this, it would fill up over the course of what, fifteen years? Two year, oh, then I'll leave it in there, okay. Yeah. Two years, you fill up us down, so. I know we've been building a lot, but I didn't realize they fill up. Oh, oh, yeah, that's stupidness. What about, uh?
I'm just going to see, sorry, I interrupted, this is a, not a levy-driven department, this is. Or as well, the fund balance is the source of funds.
There's not much of a difference, Pat, when you have a solid base assessment on every single.
No, I understand that, but I, I want to make it clear to this.
Explain that, the difference between that and a levy.
Just, wasn't an argument, I'm just making the point that this is a levy-driven organization, and it's not a levy-driven department. Uh, the, um, just a quick question, if I could share the, traditionally, um, in, in how we set this up, that's historically what we've done, right?
Yeah.
So you're not asking for a difference, any change? No, okay, very good. Want to make sure the board heard that, too.
Then the merch position. Yeah, I, I don't know that I'd be in favor of that or adding, um, adding labor costs for the mattress deconstruction. But you have approval on your solid base assessment fee, so I guess it's for the committee. So I guess it's for the committee to work through now.
Right, right.
But I'll talk with Larry.
Any other questions, Christine? Thank you. Thanks Nicole.
So Chair, on the ARPA project review, I handed out a summary sheet of. Of the projects the board is. Has approved. And so that list is before you. I thought it was a good idea just to take a look at that and like the request was to understand kind of. How much we've allocated from the six point four million that we've received. To projects and that's the list. I might be a little off on snow removal. I sent you a text, Brent, was that number correct fifty-eight thousand? Okay, what's the real number? I'm a little high there, okay.
But we had the push behind also.
Right.
The push, little one?
Yes, and then the little one. Twenty-four hundred.
Okay.
That's the total cost.
About fifty-four thousand, all right, I'll update it. But I wanted the board just to see that, see if you had any questions.
Any questions?
Moving on Chair, to consider applying for local assistance travel consistency fund grant. That's on page nine, page nine. I gave you a little bit more information because I just want to make sure the board appreciates what this is. We asked a lot of questions of our peers at the MACA conference. And what we've been told is this is through the American Rescue Plan Act. But this funding is also has broad discretion on how we use it. And so if you look at page nineteen, there's a list of the counties and what we would receive. If the board were to endorse us moving forward with this, we would receive an allocation of eighty-three thousand five ninety-three fifty-nine in two thousand twenty-two. And the same amount in two thousand twenty-three. And again, we're just looking for approval to move forward with the application.
I thought I read once in there that it had. I read it once and I thought it said something. I couldn't find it again that it had to be some sort of lost revenue or lost. But I. It just, it kind of, how I read it at that time was it showed unless it was tribal. But I can't, I read it again last night and I could not find that. So I don't know. I was concerned about the how to spend it. And then it's also said we could pool monies and I'm just wondering if there's any project to pool this with tribal. And come up with some housing project that would really make an impact. But that's for if, when we get it. Eighty-three thousand doesn't go a long way for housing project, you know, for improved housing. I think that the intent of this grants would be working with. And kind of, it looks to me like it's kind of geared towards tribal housing or tribal improvement relation somehow. Denise, maybe you have, is it would be through housing? Did you look through this grant or? Okay, but it's from the local assistance and tribal consistency fund. To me, I'd like to see if we, you know, really can't make a difference with it instead of just reimbursing our funding in some other. Some other way.
Yeah, I think we can figure out how we can spend it later, what we can put it to. But right now we need authorization votes.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, just to, just to kind of follow on to Commissioner Nelson's point. If the, if you look at that first page of the guidance, that fourth paragraph kind of outlines what you can use it for. It's very broad. It does exclude one item and that's lobbying activities. So there is one exclusion, but it seems like just about everything else would be available. Housing, of course, is available, but so is economic development. So that's something to keep in mind. But yeah, we're just looking for approval, so we'll move forward with it after we receive that approval.
Entertaining a motion to apply for the grant.
So move second.
Motion by John, second by Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Well, and Chair, if I may, just a, just a couple of updates that I didn't make as part of my report. The opioid funding, we did complete all the application process. We've completed the financial paperwork. We did receive our first deposit in the amount of forty-seven thousand just this year. And then after that, we'll be getting eighteen payments, you know, from them. I think the eight, the payments will start at, I think eighty or ninety thousand a year, starting next year. The, I just want to let you know that that's in process. And right now we're just waiting for public health. They're working on a public health strategy per the guidelines and they're in process with that. And then the Blue Cross Blue Shield grant, that was for the dental project. We've also completed the paperwork on that. The board has already supported us moving on that. And I'm just working with Blue Cross Blue Shield on some other follow-on paperwork. And I'm meeting with Jane Newbauer here just to kind of cover the steps in the process as expenditures are starting to submit. We're essentially going to be a pass through for that program. And that was for a hundred thousand dollar grant. It just, I didn't, I didn't mention that the report, I thought I'd mentioned that now. Thank you.
You're done?
Yes, right finance committee now.
How about consideration for the CPR training?
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. We've been moving all over the place, that's on me. So I, yeah, there's plenty of more to talk about. So on page twenty-one, we have an invoice here for AD training. We. Our non-civilian individuals have really don't get any type of AD training. We have a lot of AEDs in the building. So we moved forward with some training for them. And this was in our ARPA sheet in past discussions. We had about almost eighty individuals respond, again, non-civilian employees. So our, our law enforcement people, our correction agents, our highway people are all trained differently. But on how to operate an AD, we had Safe Assure do that. That's a company under consultant. And so employees were very pleased with having the training. And it was a very diverse group of training, meaning we have people in each department across each building, across each level. That have that training facilities is the lead in auditing our AEDs and they do that on a quarterly basis. And to make sure that they're fully charged and have all the equipment. So we're ready, we believe, in case someone does have some type of accident where an ED is necessary. So we're looking for approval for that.
Do we need a motion to approve paying that invoice?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Richard.
Sorry.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
I just, the backup acrima, all that was, was information for you. Just to appreciate the agenda of the, of the human resources director and the administrators calendar during that event. There was a lot of good presentations relating to bargaining unit negotiations and investigations and discharges. So we found it very productive and just reviewing and discussing with our peers what's happening. Again, a lot of discussions about insurance and how expensive it is for many of the counties. I'm glad we're not in that situation, but many of them are experiencing twenty or thirty percent increases, some as high as forty-nine percent increases. So, so it was a good learning experience for us. The state legislative update, again, in the following pages. Was something that AMC requested that we send each commissioners. I know you probably received this, but they were just looking to, to get feedback from the board on any priorities that they would have. Certainly now that we have representation across all the committees, we, you know, we would have that. But certainly if the board wanted to focus on any particular project or set of projects, we certainly could. You know, make sure that's communicated to all the stakeholders that are at these committee meetings.
Okay, and we did the purchase agreement, so.
Yes, yes.
On to finance.
Yes, sir, yep.
Well, that was the change in the closing case. We did that, right? Yeah.
Good morning. I'm requesting a motion to approve regular claims auditor warrants over ninety days and additional issues.
So move.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
Next, the license list, which I did put on the backside of your finance minutes. We have five tobacco renewals.
We'll get a brew ball party.
Motion by John. Ben?
Yep.
Second by Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
The final item I have are the August reports. There was a correction to the ARPA balance. Both for July and August, reporting the six million. The other change on the investment analysis is we've added the ARPA line to show that that three million has been invested. So that we are tracking the full amount that we've received and then reporting that that part of it has been invested.
Move to accept.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Barry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Denise?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the MOU.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Barry.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to say it was just up because there is new personnel added to the different departments and it's a non-budget item.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried.
I'll move the claims for human services, public health and transit.
Motion by Ben.
Second.
Second by Barry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, hearing none, motion carried. Pat? Oris?
Yeah, come on up Susan. You're, you've been right at the right time. You're right at the right exact time.
So I could start though Chair. So this, this was tabled from what was presented at the last meeting. I think historically the board was supportive going out for quotes. And then that was reviewed at the last board meeting and then tabled. We did put an email out to all commissioners on the benefits of the project and we just put this back in the packet again. Again, we're indicating that this would be ARPA driven and certainly there are ways to do pieces of this or all of this. I think what came out interesting at the board meeting was the fact that human services has quite a bit of scanning work, which was really new to hearing that from all of us. So we appreciated Denise bringing it up when she was on teams. And I think what we're just looking is for some additional direction the board could consider this or again table it for a future date or no additional date. When we table something, we bring it back the next board meeting, or at least I do. So I'm looking for thoughts and any questions that we can answer for you.
Ben and Barry are the ones that had the questions.
Well, you saw the email, we didn't get any explanation yet. I think we'll sit down, you know, some of the department heads in person and find out how much. Needs to get scanned in from the assessor's office, the auditor's office and planning and zoning department and Denise. I think we're, I'm very supportive of doing all our recorded documents.
I, I think the recorder's office, you know, I think there's a usage, more of a, almost a daily usage of it from the public. That would have a benefit to be kind of the online scanning. So I'd be, I'm leaning more towards supporting this part of it. I'm not sure about the other departments. It's more of a record safety keeping thing and I don't know if we need to go to that extreme. I don't know if we need to go to that level for those documents. If we just have a scan, internal scanning and save them on a jump drive or a Sid card. I don't know if that would suffice for those.
So what do we have to do?
Well, I mean, if I could, I mean, it's a great conversation to have. Do you, what are your thoughts, you're the planning and zoning person, what is the value for you on scanning?
It's a big deal for us and I don't know if the rest of this stuff is going to be the same. But I know like before realtors would call in and say, hey. Give me the information on this septic system. And then somebody would have to go pull it out of the file and then send it to them. Now they can just go online and get it and they don't even have to call there. So I don't know if the rest of the stuff you want to put on there, if they're, if the public is using that in the same way. It would be, it would be a big deal. It's a big deal for me to just go online and just get the information rather than calling or driving in here.
Is there?
Why do you laugh? It's just funny with you going online. Yeah, right, right, Richard, you bet.
He made me do my permits online. He didn't make me, but now I'm doing them and. Yeah, but you're right. I don't like going online.
You have someone else go online.
No, I'm actually, I'm not very good.
Kyle, is there a charge to the realtors and stuff for accident?
It's so, it's so easy. I mean, you go into the parcel searches right there, septic inspection.
And it's just as many homeowners.
I look at it all the time.
Yeah, and I use it, I use it all the time, so it's very helpful.
Personally, I think, you know.
Well, that would be in the future. And we're not even going to keep the septic records anymore, so someday that'll phase out. Well, we're not keeping them going forward, are we? The state is the only one that's keeping a record of that. But you came to us a year or two ago and I didn't think that was such a good idea because of the volume of use the realtors do have with it. And then the board took action that the state was going to be the only one to keep the information about when the. About the septic systems.
There's a lot of information the state doesn't get and you have to have it all, all the designs from. We have all the designs from way back and you have to keep all of that. Once that's in that, it all has to be kept.
Well, and at any rate, that's a, that's a small piece of probably what is proposed here. But I don't know what all they propose scanning in from your files. I don't know what. Yeah, well, that's.
You do, you do your, like your permits. They're, they're, they're online too, right? You can look up like the permits that have been issued in the township. And that's all, that's all scanned in?
New ones or the current ones you mean?
Well, I go online and I look under permits, I can look up.
Since we got it tonight.
Okay, that's part of that program. Okay.
You can't see the whole thing, but it'll give you.
Yep, yep, yep.
Well, and Chair, if I could just offer, I know Lisa Will is online. I know she wasn't able to be here, she's off site. Could we ask if she would like to comment just from her department? Lisa, Will, are you able to comment on kind of your, your area of the project and what, how important it is for you to have things scanned?
Yeah, so our books, I did look back through the retention schedule and if they aren't kept by the county. Then they would have to go to the state archives. So some fashion they do need to be saved and accessible. And if we have them scanned, it would just be that much easier for the taxpayers to get that info instead of having to go to state archive.
Well, they, they could get it from the auditor's office, what, what they would like scanned in or from your office. Most people typically would get it from their prior tax statements.
Right, but going back to like the nineteen fifties, sixties, the info in our books is a little different than the tax side because it has the land and building breakdowns.
One thing I'd like to see is a demo of how it would, how the public would use it then. How, how easy it is, how good is it? Or is it just a, I mean, is it just one, one file that you have to search for hours to find what you're looking for? I mean, is there a, how would you find your document that you're looking for? If there's no table context, if there's no ease to getting to it, it's not valuable. You know what I'm saying? If, so if there's a, if you could, if they have a supporting document in another county or some way to show, show us that to say, this is how easy it is. I want to find a planning and zoning record from nineteen eighty-two that shows the, if this building was built then or if they had a, you know. If there's something like, if it can, if you can navigate that information.
I don't want to speculate, but
Well, right, but I'm, I'm just saying, is it, can I get to that, at least that, you know, how, somewhere to get close to it? I mean, if I'm, if I have to scroll in 18,000 pages to find something, I mean, that doesn't do, doesn't do anyone any good. I mean, unless you're, I mean, there has to be, if you're going to spend this much money, you will have to find, have a way to get to the document that you're looking for. I mean, within reasonable steps. I mean, it doesn't, if you're just gonna, that's where I just don't, what does this give us besides, besides a second copy? If it's something that the public can use, and I mean, I'm hoping something in recorders that can, you know, jump to a year, jump to a month, jump to a day, or jump to a project, or, you know, if you can get those links to it, it has value. If it's, if it's just a huge download, it doesn't have value. Is there another county that has something that would, in the finished look of this? That we can?
Yes, actually, most. Oh, they already have.
To this level, you think? I know, I know, but we've worked with this, we've worked with the company also. It's not like we're, so we have partial.
But as far as the recorder's part of it, that's already set up for that. So we would have our track index books, call it there, go right on there, and you can go back and find the deed, wanting in whatever section township range has the names, and then you would locate that document number or that book and page, and then you'd just be able to, you'd have that field right there, and you can keep that in and pull up your document and locate that. So for all that, as far as going back, realtors, banks, attorney, everybody, anybody who comes and research that, they can research that for free in our public room, but then you still have to have staff to show them how to do that. Other, you know, for the personal.
Would you estimate a cost savings if Human Services jumped on board?
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. But I mean, I think you bring up a good point too about the planning, zoning, the assessor, and the auditor's office. I mean, I, I really don't know how much of that needs to go in and maybe all of it, but that's, that's what we'd like to know.
For the recorder's portion of it, it's basically security for those, for those documents.
Yes, and that we always have that good preserved image. You have to keep that forever, no matter what.
I, I think we should do yours for sure, but, you know, it, the reason maybe, I think you already have a contract with them, but to do all the books downstairs, we're trying to maybe get a breakpoint by purchasing all of this together. And I just don't know how much of this we want to.
Collaborate and have everybody come do it together.
I, I think we should if we decide to scan all of planning and zoning files, but I'm not really sure that it's worth the $470,000.
Well, if I could just add just one thing, Chair, is the, I would encourage the, the board, if they haven't done so, is to take a little tour on, on how much space we used for storage. It's significant. The other thing, there is a revenue stream with, with the recorder system as well. And keep in mind, in the Human Services project, if that were to occur, I, I don't know if there's going to be an economy of scale. You have to keep in mind that it's going to be a per-document scanning thing. If there's going to be a cost, and there's not a chain of command issue, although we're very conscious of people taking books out of our building and scanning them, Human Services, it's going to be all confidential information. So that's going to probably have to be done on-site. It's a whole, really a whole different project, but it's good to know about it. And like I said, we were very surprised to hear that that was an opportunity for us. So, so I think you've heard from all the department heads and heard from me, and I guess the, what the board's pleasure, I guess.
More information?
Yeah, I mean, I, nobody's answered how, you know, how the files would get used in the three, the, I mean, Lisa kind of did say that the breakdown for the auditor's, you know, tax files went to have your building versus your land values. And I could see how that could be necessary for your capital gains. Yeah. Oh, okay. And Lisa's, okay. Yeah, well, that's kind of like the recorder stuff that could go in there for sure. Well, it's, what do you think, Kyle? Do you think all of the, all of your files should get scanned, or just the septic records, or what?
Septics are in there already. So what you're going to have in there, site permits, land elevation permits, RV permits, complaints, things of that nature. I think there's, I think you have an element that there's some figure value to others, you know, in a, a scale, but the problem is that they're not separated. They're just in one manila folder, so they just take that and they're in. I, I think you could prioritize if they're separated.
Nobody's going to do that, though. So it's either all or nothing on the rest of the documents, you're saying?
Essentially.
And Pat brought up space, but it's not like we're going to get rid of any of our paper files, you know? So I, I don't know.
Well, they just wouldn't be here. I mean, they wouldn't be in our, on our campus in our buildings. So it wouldn't, spaced as a cost. Most of these, once they're scanned, would go to the historic museums, is that what I'm understanding? And, yeah.
That one entire room. That room could actually be used, things. Ones that have my book. And the one thing too about observing these books is they're not in a finite control here. I mean, they are going to continue to deteriorate no matter what, not like we have tracking humidity or anything to that nature, or if something else happens, they get destroyed.
Okay, we need to move ahead.
Yeah, I'm not ready to vote yes on it yet, but.
You know, the motion to table?
Sure.
Would we be able to split up the project like?
We'll have to find out. I think, I, I think we could move with County Recorder at this time, if you're.
But do you want to spend that money? If there was a break, is there a break for doing more? If we lose, do we lose that break?
I don't believe so. I mean, the.
It's, it's a per-price scan, so there's not an economy of scan.
Right.
Okay, all right. You want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the County Recorder's request for scanning documents.
Motion by Barry.
Second. Two thirty-five.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing down, motion carried. Kyle, stay right where you are. We're going to go to planning and zoning.
Two thirty-five, two forty-seven.
Yeah, it's nine thirty-four, so let's do the planning and zoning.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan.
Well, Susan, while he's grabbing his stuff, could you answer your question? What was the quote expiration date? Okay. Okay.
Thing that I can say, as far as my, at some point there will be this, and I have not that uploadable.
Right.
And we did do that digitally back in two years. That was like $4,000 at that time.
Well, we'll do it at some point, and it's, you know.
That'll be the.
It was in your narrative, and we'll have to.
Yeah. Okay, just wanted you to be aware that there will be a fee to upload all that into software program to make it available to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
A planning commission recommendation, sorry, from October 12th. The first applicant, a final plat for five repairing lots, one non-repairing lot be called Ida North Shores. Recommendation to approve.
So.
Motion by Barry.
Sorry.
Second by John. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing down, motion carried.
The next two applicants on the agenda are going to Audubon Township for a final plat and Lakeview Township for a final plat. So your next applicant was Kevin Byer, requesting a change of zone from industrial to commercial with a recommendation to approve.
Motion to the board?
Move to approve.
Motion by John?
Second.
Second by Richard. Any discussion?
I'm just, I, I guess I'm not familiar with the project and haven't had any communications, but I'm not very fond of commercial properties. I don't know this property at all, so I'm looking for your, you know, the worries that we have with straight commercial.
Yeah, it's, it's actually industrial now.
I see that.
And it's surrounded all by commercial property. So it's, I don't know how it got to be industrial. It should never have been.
But you know, you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Do you have this, the spot commercial, the spot commercial is dangerous.
Yeah, this is not that way, though.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by John, second by Barry. All in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing down, motion carried.
Last applicant, Christopher and Jeannie Corbin, requesting a conditional use permit for storage. Recommendation to approve with the stipulation that outside storage only be on the west side of the building, that any storage longer than one year be screened from public view.
Motion to the board?
Is that one across from Seven Sisters?
No, no.
No.
If you, I make motion, motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Ben. Motion by Ben.
I'll second to concur with planning and zoning. Maybe a little more clarification on the tree part of it?
The tree part of it was for that Brandon Grimes that's going to Lakeview.
Okay.
Yeah, that's down, so, yeah. Okay, motion by Ben, second by Barry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All same sign, hearing down, motion carried.
So Lakeview will put that condition on open?
Yes. The next agenda item is just the road agreement discussion from our September 6th conditional use permit approval with the stipulation that a road agreement be in place between the township and the applicant. There's been lots of discussions since. I know the township is here, the applicant is here, if they so choose to attest to that. But speaking with Commissioner Okerson, there is some discrepancies potentially on the intent of that agreement that was placed on it on September 6th. So we're just here to clarify that.
Well, basically, the minutes didn't reflect what my thoughts or wishes were, and mainly that I sat down, the applicant and the township and work out some type of heckle ball, a road agreement between them without bringing in attorneys and, and I know we're presented to one from Troy Gilchrist, and there are some good points in that and some that I don't agree with, with my lawyer experience in road and stuff. So I think, hopefully, it would sit down and work out a agreement that's good for all and not only for this operation, but for other ones that might, or other issues up there in feedlots that you have in the township.
Well, the motion, the motion at the meeting in the conditions was a signed road agreement provided by Spring Creek Township. That's basically what the minutes say. It doesn't define.
No, and it, my, when I made the stipulation, it was more work together on a road agreement, not one just provided, because the only provider was from Troy Gilchrist. And I stated that that day, during the meeting, that I didn't agree with all points. The needs would be refined and worked out.
Of that one that was given to us that day?
Yeah.
Okay.
They were just giving us the day of the meeting, so just glancing through, they said, I agree with some things in there.
But, but the, but the motion, the, the way it's stated is that the applicant has to go to the township to get a signed road agreement.
Right.
There's no, I mean, it may be vague, but that's the end of the day for me.
Right.
Well, it's not for me, because if they're not going to work with the guy, then that's a problem. You know, if you're, you're going to.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about whether I agree with whatever conditions there are, but that was what the motion was. And if you want to amend it, then you have to publish it, because in my opinion, we can't amend a conditional use permit today because it hasn't been notified in public.
No, we can't take.
We can't do any action today on this because there's no, there is no public, there's been nothing sent to the township. Now, they're here because they've, they've been informed of it, but to put this on the agenda today, I think was very, it, it's, it's very misleading to show that there might be action on it, because there, in my opinion, you cannot take action on this today because this was an amendment.
The intent, the original intent was just for John to state that he has some issues with the minutes, but it got spread around the country apparently, and that's all, all fine. But the, the thing should be resolved between the township and the owner. That's the way it should be. Now, if they, I don't know how much attempt could, would one of the township officers like to come up and, I'd like to ask a few questions? Nobody? Can you give us an update on the progress with the road agreement, if there is any progress?
We had a township meeting last Tuesday, and I know last week there was a road agreement that was from Troy, sent to the applicant, and we haven't heard back. And then found out this was on the agenda today, so.
Just for the record, could you state your name?
Oh, Vance Drave, Spring Creek.
Brian Growth, Spring Creek Trigger.
Okay. So, so there is no agreement, and is there an impasse, or you think you have not been communicated well enough with? Again, this was just to talk about John had an issue with the minutes. Was there no action taken? It, you're right, Barry, it is somewhat misleading being on the agenda.
Well, two road agreements are misleading, you know, in our packet. It's a very, I mean.
Otherwise, it could have come up in reports and correspondence.
So.
We're trying to. I mean, we've chosen, we don't, we're just farmers. We've chosen to have a lawyer do this because that's what they do.
Which is not right.
I mean, we don't write up road agreements, we don't write up contracts. So we've chosen the go-out route.
But you're ultimately the deciders. You're ultimately the deciders.
Yep, yep.
So if there's, if the owner has some issues with some of the language, you certainly can have a conversation about that and talk about it.
Troy, Troy has addressed some of that, or?
Well, Troy's trying to, but you also have this, some give and take, you gotta say.
Absolutely.
The, I believe, this, this is the original, was drafted eight, twenty-four, twenty-two. We didn't get a response for, till end of September of anything. And then the first response was where they just crossed everything out. So what does that say to us? You know, that's where we're standing.
And you have not responded to that at all?
Yeah, Troy was busy last week, so he is dr, drawn up a new one and sent to them just yesterday.
Okay.
So that's where the, that's where we're at today.
And then we found.
We found out about this yesterday afternoon, and it's like, well, that's.
I get it. And I, and I have to apologize for that. It, it, I understand where you guys are coming from.
Yeah, yeah. It isn't like we are not trying, but we also have to have, I mean, they, they waited 30 days to send us or more to send us anything back. So are we supposed to respond the next day then? Or we, do we have 30 days, or whatever timeframe it was?
Well, as far as our position here as a county board, and I think, I hope you guys agree with me, that we have no, no play in this at all, except for that if the applicant can't get agreement with you, he'll have to reapply and come back to us and for some type of agreement, I guess. I, I don't know why else we'd do that.
He would, they would have to come back to, to make an amendment.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so they have to reapply.
I don't know if that would have to go through planning and zoning, public hearing.
I think it would. I think you'd have to give a public hearing testimony, give time for that.
Again, you know, we would have to, but the planning commission is going to say, hey, we did not, didn't stick like a road agreement. They're going to prove it again, and it's going to go back there.
And that's exactly what'll happen.
It'll, it will, if the planning commission, planning commission would go, it would have to go there. That's our, that's our procedure, and then it would come before us, and we could hammer up, if we had to, we could hammer, hammer something out. But I will say, I'm, I want to make sure the township's not going to incur huge expenses down the road when some corporate farm comes in and, and you can't get a hold of something. I mean, I have a, I have a big concern with that. So I suggest you, I suggest to the company to work something out prior to coming back to this board, because we could amend it any way we want at that point.
We could, but if these guys don't want to work with them, okay, and I don't know what the road agreement says, but you know. We could, but if these guys don't wanna work with them, okay, and I don't know what the road agreement says, but you know, all these, everybody's using these township roads and destroying them. So it's not like, you know they have been, fans for years, you guys hauling grain, everybody does it, now these guys wanna have hogs and so, you know, I agree that if they wreck the road, they should fix it, but if you, but you guys need to have an agreement that I don't even know if a lawyer needs to draw it up, nobody else has got agreements for these grain carts or any of this other stuff. So like Barry says, maybe he won't, but maybe I, maybe I'll say no road agreement if you can't work out a decent one with them. You know, and I don't know how hard you're trying, but I do know it's just another farm in an agricultural area. And I don't think all them farmers have road agreements, and I see the semis going down them roads, and so whether it's fertilizer or grain or livestock, it's all heavy, and I hope that you guys can work something out with him. So that he can do this, that's what I hope.
Been back and forth a few times and then.
Well, you know, I'm kinda going by John here, because he knows more about road agreements than anybody, and if he thinks the road agreement isn't fair, that's where I have a problem with it, I don't know that much about it.
I wanted something that's more equitable, not only this operation, but other operations within the townships and that's where I look at it, other little road agreements would go with gravel pits and so forth. It works for everybody in a township degree and.
Yeah, and that'd be nice if you guys could work something out.
So that's where we're at, you guys, if you can, if you don't, can't come to a decision with the owners, it will come back to us, I'm sure.
Yep.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah, I don't know if you want.
Next time, a little more notice would be.
Well, it would be public notice, just, and you'd be publicly mailed, just like you did the first time.
With the conditional use.
This, this was, it's unfortunate, it should have been brought up in a different way, certainly shouldn't have had two road agreements before us in our board pack, because it, it, it just inferred that there was gonna be action and then.
Yeah, shouldn't have been on, shouldn't have been on the agenda.
Yeah, they were.
They were?
Yeah.
I only saw the one.
It's not a.
It was just information. Two of their words.
Okay, I think, ma'am, did you have something you wanted to say? Ma'am? No, okay. Sure.
Eric, is there?
We are the owners in regard to the permit that you granted to us. Excuse me, from the beginning, our intent always was to, if damage occurred during that process on construction of that feedlot, that we would repair and pay for expenses of whatever damage that consisted of. That's where we stand. We've said that from the beginning. And now here's where we're at.
Well, I'm not sure here where you're at is, what you're.
We've gone back and forth, it was indicated that they just come to an agreement between the parties, no lawyers involved unless we needed to draw something up legally after back and forth was committed. We received a email from a lawyer after the commissioner meeting when our permit was passed.
And it was the original one that you, what you guys have seen, and we had not seen it beforehand. A couple other things I'd like to point out, we do have a building permit from Spring Creek Township, we had to use the sixty day rule to get it from them. And there was no road agreement attached to that, so they did not ask for one of their own building permit. I did submit a signed road agreement that.
That holds us accountable.
That holds us accountable, I guess I'd like to present it to you, I don't know, Kyle, did you present that, okay. This is what we're willing to sign here, do you wanna take a look at?
And we'd be happy to have, have Spring Creek sign off on it if they're okay with that.
And, and I know they have not seen it, we just came up with it.
It's straightforward.
And it does not, it resolves Spring Creek of anything, we agreed to protect that road, no matter who road it is. We know it's Spring Creek's road, but.
During construction.
During construction, we're not asking anything from the township, we just simply are saying, here is a road agreement, we will sign off to protect it.
And that's not working for the township apparently.
The township, we have been back and forth with the township. I have witnesses here that will attest that the township, one of their members is spreading around the community, they're gonna make it as hard for us as they can. And I have witnesses here that would stand up and say that, if you want that, I don't really wanna get into the weeds, but I do have witnesses here willing to attest to that. We did go to their township meeting last week, we, we tried to work on the road agreement, they said our lawyer will work with us. And then one of their, and then it, and it even got pretty heated, we'll just say it as that, they do not wanna work with us, it's all coming through their attorney. And this is.
There appears to be a lot of bias.
There's, there appears to be a lot of bias.
Increased hostility between the board members, Eric was almost physically thrown out of the meeting.
I, we don't feel we can work with Spring Creek, that's what, the permit is from Becker County, that's why that, what I have given you.
Is directed towards Becker County, putting our, putting us accountable.
But you understand in the conditional use permit, one of the conditions was that you had to have a road agreement with the township, now if that's not workable.
That's not work.
Then you have to come back.
Can I ask the question, is it legal for a county to force someone to enter into an agreement with a third party?
There's just a condition on a conditional use permit, I would assume that, I mean, we.
That, I'm just, I, I don't.
That's for sure, I guess I don't have that.
I don't know, I'm just asking, because to be forced into agreement with a hostile entity towards you is very difficult, how do we even approach that?
Well, you approach it by having to come back, if you're not agreed with, with the terms or the conditions.
What, then what do we need to do to come back?
You have to reapply to the planning commission.
For everything?
I would assume so, Kyle?
Just an amendment, very simple.
Just an amendment, okay.
Okay. Be possible to request Commissioner Okerson to be that liaison between us and the township, being he's a road expert?
Certainly ask him to.
You, I'm not saying myself, but probably Jordan Jacobson from Highway Department, Jim Olson, the county engineer.
Okay.
That can kinda mediate back and forth, you know, what's, because we have same issue with our county roads up there. Dealt with that for many years on heavy construction and developments up there and feedlots and so forth, so. There's an issue on all roads ones throughout certain times of year.
Absolutely.
Certainly ask anyone you choose, and if they choose to participate.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm a little confused, because I, I sent, so when I seen, saw this in the packet, then I looked back, because I got an email from Pat when this whole thing was going through, where Troy had emailed Eric the road agreement on August twenty-ninth. Before we ever got it, and then I see this road agreement in our board packet that looks like the same road agreement, but it's changed. And then Troy Gilchrist has one with red letter and blue letter additions added, things taken away. So where did the one in our packet come from?
I don't know, that's why, I question, I, I don't have my packet.
Didn't you submit that? Where did she get them?
Where did the, because we have, we have the one that you handed us, it's in our packet.
This isn't the one though.
Somebody. I know, that, where did this one come from, the Spring Creek Township road agreement, where did this come from dated?
It's a mod, it's a modified version.
Of what we received.
Of Troy Gilchrist, we eventually got this email, went through it, and then we took their agreement and took the parts out.
We didn't agree with.
And sent it back to them, so this has been going back and forth, yes. So it's a modified ver, so yes, that, if you're asking a question.
I was under the impression you were saying nobody's working with you, but Troy is representing the township, and he has been working with you, because I have electronic proof of that.
Yes.
Plus I have proof that he emailed you this back in August.
I, I don't know, I don't know what he.
In our packet, then we ended up getting your version on their basically letterhead with the same draft date.
Yeah.
How did that happen?
We just modified it back.
Why, why didn't you modify it and take off the draft date or change the draft date, so it looked like it was from you guys, not from Troy or the township?
You know what, I don't have a good answer for that, that was, there was no.
We're not, we're not lawyers.
There's no intention of that, other than that, us, we thought that.
Why did you email it to, what made you email it to Nicole then?
Oh, just to pass it on to the county, that's all, as an attempt, just to see that we're, we, just to do that, to try and get it because, before, the, the road agreement's in front of you right now.
The one in our packet, which is.
Yes, that one, I put, I brought that forward to try and get that on, to show that I would prefer something like that, but the agreement that I just handed.
This is what you just gave us, and this is in the packet as well, so where did the other one come from? Which one do you want?
I want the one in your hand.
Okay, why did you email us the other one?
Because I hadn't come up with that until after the fact, till two days later, so in my mind.
So did Nicole get two different messages, one that looked like it was from the township, which you actually haven't been corresponding, because we have proof of it. And then a few days later, after they got that, you emailed this to make it look like, this is what I really want, not the other one.
That is what I really want, and the reason I came up with that, I thought, this is so complicated, so at first Troy Gilchrist sent this
Massive.
Massive thing.
Document.
That got mistaken, that that's what everybody wanted, then we butchered it apart, for another word, said, hey, here's what we want, here's what we want, and then it jumped on me after seeing another document that you guys.
Example of another county.
That you worked with, with your gravel pit, we, to a gravel pit, I thought, you know what, we're making this way too complicated.
Let's be straightforward.
Let's be straightforward, and I'm here, because all we wanna do is take care of the road. So this is us saying, hey, we'll sign off, we'll take care of the road, we're not even asking anybody to sign off on it, this is our commitment to the county as per the permit, we will take care of the road.
Oh, will you send us those two emails, please, that went to Nicole? And any correspondence regarding it?
So, sorry about the confusion.
Thanks.
Okay, again, back to the township and try to resolve this.
Okay.
That's all we can do.
I have a, I have a, just a quick question, maybe we can try to get us a little closer, you two entities a little closer. Now, your agreement is only through construction.
Yes, sir.
Initial construction, are you talking, I mean, I don't, I guess I'm not clear, are you talking about building the road up to a different standard through construction then, or you?
No, just, just.
So you want no improvements on the road at all?
No, we're not asking for improvement.
You'd never want an improvement, the new owners will never ask for an improvement.
Well, I don't know about that, and, first off, I'm gonna be, there is not.
Regulations required.
Yeah, whatever, I, I'm gonna be ownership in this, so new owners, I could say the Zerns will be part of that. But whatever the, whatever the law is, is all we want, but we are not asking for an improvement, the road's fine, is what it is. We're not saying, hey, just need to do.
I'm just trying to get a little conversation here.
Okay.
So the, so maybe, maybe the township doesn't do anything, and you're on your own on a, on a minimum maintenance road.
It's not a minimum maintenance, I don't wanna go down this road, but.
I'm not, I'm not debating anything.
But the fact, Matt, the road is what the road is.
Township has a lot of authority on that road.
We're satisfied with the road.
Obviously not.
No, we're satisfied.
There is some kinda double standard here going on, though, because there's all kinds of turkey barns and dairy farms and and nobody's got a road agreement, and now all of a sudden, and I understand that, that these guys should be held responsible if they wreck the road. But this is getting pretty deep, I mean, Barry, I don't know how you get your fertilizer, or how you get your stuff, but I'll bet you it comes down the same roads and they're doing the same thing out where I live, so. That's why I don't, why are we gonna be so hard on these guys, I'm not sure why we are, because there's, they're in the same.
I, I'm not familiar with, with the, the legal, the township requirements. I mean, I don't know what the township requirements are for that road, if, if the township has no obligation to do anything on that road, no winter, winter maintenance or anything, they don't need a road agreement, they can just let it be, and, and whoever's out there needs to clear it themselves, I don't know that. But if, if it's a, a daily use, commercial business that has to, and you need a road improvement, if something came to the county and said we're gonna build this business here and we want you to put this road up to a nine ton standard, then that's different. So I don't know the differences here, but the township makes the worst of it.
The farmers wrecked my road, and my wife had to go around, because you couldn't even, the, the kids were using it for a mud run, they'd bring four wheel drives out there, that's how bad it was. But I'm not saying you don't have to do it, they did, they needed fertilizer, they needed to get it done, the same as these guys do, and I wish everybody would put aside their personal feelings here and treat him like everybody else gets treated, that's a farmer, or whatever they're doing in America. Why are we beating him up, I, I don't know, I don't understand this, because they're all doing it, I don't care if it's turkey farms getting semi-loads of feed or milk trucks going in across to my neighbors to get their milk, and they're wrecking the roads, and the roads are getting fixed, and but all of a sudden this guy's getting it really hard and I.
Okay.
Yeah, I hope we can, I hope, I hope something can work out here, so don't come back to us, I wish that somebody would just move this along, he's, he's agreed to fix the road.
We've maintained that from the beginning.
Well, if somebody's making it as hard, if, if one of you guys said you're gonna make it as hard as you can for him, that's really sad, if, if one, if somebody back there said that, that's sad.
Okay, right.
Okay.
When we permit conditional use permits on gravel pits, which are not gonna be forever, it's to pull gravel out, they have to maintain the road too, not just.
There's conditions.
Not just for a, a buildup phase.
But the conditions are always, always agreed upon with the township, basically.
Yeah, and that's, I don't see how that's different here, the township said, hey, we don't.
I don't see it different here either.
We, we don't find this road to be an adequate space for this business, but, but we'd asked county that if you do permit it, that they sign this road agreement.
That's where we're at.
And now, they pointed out, they have gone back and forth with their representation. We have a proof of that, they actually got the document, made their own changes, emailed it to our zoning department, got Commissioner to put it on the agenda. It seems like things are working out pretty well, they need to.
Well, not really, because John here knows more about roads than any of us, and he says it's unfair, so where do you go with that?
I just want something that's equitable.
Well, they haven't got there yet.
No.
No, but they should.
Have to keep working there.
And I need something like.
Third-party moderator. They're agreeable.
Third-party moderator in there, leave the attorney out of it at this time, come up with an agreement, then if you need an attorney to draw it up more legal.
Well, the attorney, what the attorneys are good at is, is writing the legal part of it, they don't, they're not, like we have all the time, when we have, we send something up to the attorney, they're not interpreting what our intent or our data is, they're just writing a legal document. And I think what's happened is they're taking things to another level, I mean, I mean, you gotta tell, you gotta tell your attorney what your intent is and what your desire is, what you want to come out of that agreement, you know, instead of just giving, you know, write us an agreement, you have to be specific with attorneys to say, this is what our outcome is wanted, to protect us in the beginning, or, I mean, if you're asking for a long term, I don't know what you're, I don't know what the township's asking for. Continued, but we, you know, county, we have a, oh, it used to be gravel, we had a gravel road down in one forty-five, worked with the gravel haulers continually to build that road up and add dust control and, and blading, so, I mean, there are, and I don't know if we even had a formal agreement, but they needed to provide dust control on that road for, for that, because it was so bad, now it's, we went to another level, but, so I mean, there are agreements, even at the county level, with entities, in that case gravel companies, to, to maintain some roads, so.
That one for years is, is a verbal agreement that they raised the gravel, the county agreed gravel, the equipment and stuff, so it's a very workable one.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything you wanted to say yet? Well, he was nodding his head and he was kinda giving me some action there.
The guy in the front?
Yeah, I can't remember.
Brown?
I guess not.
We don't need to hear from him.
Not Jerry.
Land bear, oh, land baron Tram there wants to just up his rent, is all he's looking for.
Yeah.
If it's a better road, he can get more money, right Jerry?
Okay. Kerry, you're next, yeah. Nothing's easy.
Would have been easier if it wasn't on the agenda.
I agree, but.
Well, let me stop you there, because, because I, I think we're being a little unfair here. You know, when we, when we get agenda requested, if the board wants to amend a policy, you don't have a policy on agendas. We get requests from our department head, and our department head added those two documents, you don't see a word there that says approve agreement, you don't see consider agreement, those are verbs that tell you we're going to be approving something. What that, what was on there was information, and I wanna make sure that this board hears that and very clearly, and that there's no confusion for many of you. This was a consider, this was not just a consider or amend or approve, these were documents of information. And when the department head brings us those, we put them on there, we had some discussion with Commissioner Okerson, because it's his area, he's involved in it. And so I'm very comfortable it was put forth, and so I just wanna leave it at that, Chair.
Good morning, first thing I wanna bring up is our benefits fair is on schedule for tomorrow, and from ten to three. And I'm happy to say that our breakout sessions are about full, so I'll be looking at hopefully expanding some spots, pending the space that we have for individuals to do the breakout sessions with our benefits vendors to learn more about their benefits. A couple of policy updates that are, will be coming in the very near future. A policy for the social media policy that's drafted, that I am planning on bringing through courthouse committee, the appropriate committee, as well as a smoking policy that we don't have, which then leads me into the work, the work in progress of hopefully implementing in the very near future an employment or employee orientation, with the idea that a lot of these new policies will then be inputted into an employee handbook, which will help a more formalized orientation process for new employees coming on board to talk not only about. Orientation process for new employees coming on board to talk not only about benefits. But about, um, the history of the county as well as expectations, um, as they, uh, start their employment with Becker County. Um, in, I believe you were noticed that, um, I'm also working on a schedule for leadership training. Uh, for the department heads as well as the supervisors and any leads, uh, that they may have in their department. That may, they feel would be beneficial for those individuals to take part in the, in the leadership training. Um, this is offered through our organizational, um, portion of our EAP program. And again, just really trying to, um, finalize the plans. We have a couple of options. But there, I believe are very beneficial topics for our department heads as well as supervisors in the leadership, you know, area. As well as performance management, um. Conflict resolution, et cetera. I don't know that there has been, uh, training offered to department heads and supervisors for. Uh, several years, so I think it's, it's very needed. Um, but I'm putting together a final cost and again, we'll bring that through the appropriate committees in the very near future. Um, any questions at this point before I continue? Um, lastly, um, we have, or I have the opportunity, or human resources has the opportunity to partake. In a technical assistance, uh, process or program through the DDA, David Drone and Associates. Um, they also are partnered with Association of Minnesota Counties for Human Resource, uh, Technical Assistance. Um, this would allow us to have access to, um, that resource for, uh, policy writing. As well as analytics, um, for retention, um. Reasons why people are leaving, um, strategies, et cetera. So, um, the plan is to, um. Look at doing that prorated for this year and then bringing it forth, uh, for next year, for the full year. Also, um, the Association of Minnesota Counties as well is, they'll be providing for new human resource, uh, directors. Uh, mentoring program, which will then begin, uh, next year in conjunction with the technical services as well. Uh, lastly, um, Pat and I have been prioritizing policies and, and rights of the, uh, personnel policy. And, uh, next up, after I bring the policies that I, uh, referenced already that are in draft form. Um, I have reached out to our payroll department to hopefully meet with them next week. I'd really like to have their input. As we really look at our leave policies for employees. Um, there's a lot of coding that's involved, but I think it's really, um. Important that we also have payroll on board as far as how they're quoting when, uh, in employees are on leave. We have, um, many coatings, furloughs, unpaid personal leave, FMLA, et cetera. So I, I really think it can be, um, streamlined, um, so that we have good communication between the human resources as well as payroll. Um, when we look at how our, uh, policy reflects on what types of leaves, um. Employees are able to take and how that's coded through the payroll system in conjunction with as we roll out, um, UKG Pro in the very near future. For our, uh, IT system. And that's really about all I have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to see here. I did not get those two agreements in my packet.
I only see this one, but I don't even care.
It's not in this packet or my document packet.
It's in the docs.
Hmm?
It's in the documents.
Where is it at? Well, this is the, the one that's in the packet. Said there was two.
Yeah, there's, there's the one he just handed us.
Oh, tho- those two, yeah, but you were talking about blue lines and blue. That was sent by somebody else. That was sent by you.
Send by Troy.
Okay, all right, all right.
But this one is theirs. It looks like the original Troy.
I see that, yeah.
But they got a hold of it and made changes.
I tried to find Troy's original, but through the.
I emailed that to you and all the commissioners yesterday.
I got some email last night.